Good evening, I'd like to call the regular Stanley County Board of Commissioners Meeting to Order on January the twenty first at seven P M. I'd like to welcome everyone here, especially our media, thank you all for coming tonight. And at this time, I will ask Commissioner McIntyre for invocation.
Let us pray. Dear Father, we thank you so much for the many blessings you've bestowed upon us. We thank you for the beautiful weather we've had and we thank you for the rain. Dear Father, we just ask that you would be with our service people wherever they may be serving, protecting our rights for us to have these meetings. Dear Father, we think, we ask you to be with and bless the leaders of our nation-state and our local officials. We especially ask that you be with us in this meeting tonight, that the decisions we make will be pleasing to you and in the best interest of our citizens. These things we ask in Christ's name, amen. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, number nine, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes to the agenda? I've got one little thing I'm gonna do a little different tonight, I'm gonna move the public comment up first so these people won't have to sit here through the whole thing tonight. Any, anyone got any change? Not all entertained a motion to approve the-
I make a motion we approve the minutes with the-
The agenda is presented.
Agenda, agenda is presented.
Motion made, second, motion made by Commissioner Shudo, seconded by Commissioner McIntyre. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm gonna do it a little bit different, rather than have all of you sit out here until we get through our meeting, I'm gonna move the public comment up and let the American Legion Post seventy six, y'all go ahead and, I got your names up here, come ahead and do your thing.
Mister Chairman and Commissioners, I am Patty Honeycutt and I would like to introduce to you the Walter Bee Hill American Legion Post Seventy Six and Stanley County American Legion Fair Committee. They're sitting here and these two behind me. Everyone is looking for the best way to maximize resources. The American Legion Post Seventy Six has assets that through collaborations in the community will create a win-win opportunity for everyone. As many may not be aware, the property and the fair are not supported by taxpayers. I would like for you to meet two of our leaders of the American Legion Post Seventy Six, Commander Tommy Alley and our Vice Commander Cal Massengill.
I would like to thank you for granting us the time and opportunity to come before you, the Commissioners and the people of Stanley County. As was stated, we are the Walter Bee Hill American Legion Post Seventy Six. Our Legion Post is proud to sponsor many community groups and events, including a few the oldest Boy Scout Troop in the County Troop One, excuse me, Troop Twenty Nine. It had been out of existence for many, many years and we brought this back due to the, a lot of people in the county wanted this, so. And the American Legion Baseball Teams, which as you know consists of athletes from all over Stanley County, from all the different schools and all. And the Stanley County Agriculture Fair, which is run completely by the American Legion and other community volunteers. Now, I would just like to turn the floor over to our fair manager, Cal Massengill, who just returned from the North Carolina Agricultural Care Fair Convention along with Patty and her group. Cal.
Thank you Commander. Gentlemen, thank you and ladies for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight. To expand on what our Commander just said, the Stanley County Fair is ran by solely volunteer members. The members of the American Legion Post Seventy Six and its auxiliary are volunteers themselves and not only volunteer at the fair, but also volunteer for other events that we have at the Stanley County Fairgrounds and in the past fundraisers such as last Tommy said. The baseball team, community yard sales, we, this past fall, we had a turkey shoot. We also had horse shows, annual barbecue, and the funds we raise go strictly back to the community into American Legion Baseball, also assisting veterans of Stanley County and North Carolina, okay? None of us receive any money or any benefits from this other than helping veterans, okay? Some of the other things that we do, we offer scholarship opportunities through educational programs. As a matter of fact, Patty and the auxiliary are in an endeavor now to begin a patriotism and flag adequate program for all the elementary students. They'll be presenting this at school principal meetings next month, because we feel that some of that's lost now and we'd like to regain some of the patriotism in our schools and our young people, okay? Also, this being election year, which is probably important to some of you guys, okay, and women, we were organizing a get out and vote campaign, a program which encourages the core aspect of our American Legion Constitution, which we perpetuate a hundred percent Americanism. Also, to, to give a sense of obligation to the community, state and the nation as well in other voting opportunities. The Stanley County Fair is the largest fundraiser that the American Legion Post Seventy Six has. By coming tonight, we'd like to inform you and the people of Stanley County that the fair can also benefit Stanley County in tourism, you the people, the Commissioners and the business owners of Stanley County as well. Some of the ways, the fair demographics not only include Stanley County and families that live in Stanley County, but also surrounding communities and counties that don't have the fairs like we do, such as Anson, Montgomery and Union, okay? The fair offers many outlets for the educational entertainment needs, including things like animal shows. We also have live music, we have demonstrations. Last year, we had several people giving demonstrations on things like wood carving, horseshoeing and other, other events like that. It provides a public forum also, not only for organizations, but for candidates to meet thousands of voters during our fair and during our other events that we have out at the Stanley County Fairgrounds. Businesses are able to teach and advertise their services and bring in new customers for themselves as well as for Stanley County. The cost of a business booth there is a hundred and fifty bucks for the entire length of the fair, which we'd like to at least put a plug in for the fair tonight and let you guys know and, or you folks know, that the Stanley County Fair this year will begin September thirtieth and run through October the fifth, okay? We also do things, historical information is taught and shared there, of course agricultural awareness is, is the backbone of our fair, which makes up a vital part of North Carolina's County Fair offers people a sense of community and identity that encourages a sense of belonging and pride. This year, the theme of our fair is sharing our legacy. It encourages people not only to tell others their stories of history, the history of Stanley County, but inspires future generations to look back and to push forward, to learn from the past and embrace the responsibilities for, to succeed in the future. We, we kind of function similar to a Marine Korean War veteran, John Charles Ginrich. In his memoirs, he wrote, "The difficult we do now, the impossible may take a little longer," okay? And we're in it for the long run, so we would like your support and also we'd like to thank you for your time and we'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Anyone have, have any questions, Cal?
This is the first time you've been in October with the fair, is that right?
It is, sir. Well, the past couple of years, it's been earlier in the August, September timeframe. So, we're kind of getting back into the old fair tradition of the fall, okay?
Yeah, that's when it used to be.
Exactly.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Ladies, thank you for your time. Thank you all for coming and I'll give you all a few minutes to get out if you'd like to or before I continue so we won't interrupt anyone. Next item on our agenda, well, Donna, I believe I reversed this thing, so you're gonna be last. No, it's, it's a retirement award presentation to Donna, that's-
That will probably leave me.
Donna was getting, getting working for Stanley County right after college in nineteen eighty three. She was hired for the Department of Social Services in nineteen ninety four, transferred to soil and water, was a medical assistant. She was later upgraded to an administrative education coordinator and also worked with the voluntary advocacy as secretary where she maintained the minutes in the records of her board. She remained in this position until her retirement on September thirtieth, two thousand thirteen, thirty years from birth. Donna has always greeted everyone with a smile and with her outward personality, was liked by all. Donna has one daughter, Katie Chandler, and one son in all factor. In the future, she plans to continue her cleaning business and spend more time with family and friends. Donna will wish to promote.
Thank you.
This is presented to Donna Usik for faithful and dedicated service to the citizens of Stanley County. On this occasion of her retirement, we extend our sincere appreciation for the service in which you will greater achievements and rewards in the future. Presented this twenty first of January, where it is out in the American, for the full team of Stanley County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you.
Donna, I think you should be going.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it. I thank all of y'all very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much, I will. Thank you. I- Thank y'all very much. They want to know that we need to stay. They're ready to go eat.
If I could just give you a quick shout out before you leave, I was telling her beforehand that, you know, when we, we get reports from a lot of people, we get a ton of reports and they're really tough to read sometimes, but the last report you gave in the fall about the recap, your yearly recap was very nice, personable, easy to read, and it was a well put together document.
I want to thank each and every one of you. Out of the thirty years, I had some good years, had some bad years, but I was very blessed and I thank all of y'all and you will all be in my memories. So, thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is a presentation of the fiscal year two thousand twelve CDBG Scattered Site Housing Program applicants, Andy will be the presenter.
Yep, Ms. Sarah Zen from our, the Wooton Company, our contract administrator, she was called earlier today and was gonna get, was a little worried about the travel from Raleigh this afternoon and this evening, has resolved the weather that was coming in, so. In her stead, I will be presenting this item. The part of the process that we have is we allow folks to apply for the, these funds. There's certain stipulations in terms of income that have to be met, they have to pay their taxes and some other things. There are also, there's certain stipulations on the amount of funds that we can use for these, these homes, if they're over, if the, if the estimated repairs. And part of this is, we can't, you just can't go into a home and make minor repairs. A lot of times, if you go in, there's gotta be, because of the code issues, once you do something significant, you have to bring the whole house up to code. And so, you can get into an extreme amount of, of cost when you talk of structural and mechanical and H B A C and all those things, so. They, how, the homes can't exceed in terms of the cost to renovate them and bring them up to code, up forty thousand, so that limits who can be served as well. But part of this process, there's a committee that is, Housing Selection Committee that meets to, to review these applications and all this information. You have the minutes from that committee meeting in your packet, and so I won't take the time to, to review those, but you can quickly see who was represented. We have a pretty good cross section of the entire community on that, on, on that panel and committee. And so, it was decided at that meeting that we would proceed with, three houses or really four properties, three of those are homes that we know we can get done, that the one on Dale Road, South Kendall Street in Norwood and the Chapel Road in Albemarle. We're also going to proceed with doing some deed work on the one on Fish Camp Road in New London. The unfortunate thing is that home is gonna need to be replaced. I mean, it's beyond the, the ability to repair it and so that one's gonna really depend on how successful we are stretching or limiting the amount of dollars we have on the first three, and if we have sufficient funds, we'll be able to do that fourth one. We're also looking at some potential donations that we may be able to get for, for that home through maybe some religious organizations or through the home building industry. And so, those are the four that we're presenting to this board this evening for approval and to move those forward. If you have any questions, I'd be more happy to answer those.
Anyone have any questions? It was a pleasure to board.
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve this recommendation.
Motion made by Commissioner McIntyre for approval. The second, by, I didn't hear who it was. Seconded by, I had two hollering at me, seconded by Commissioner Morton. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is acknowledgement of the Health Department's recent reaccreditation. Presenter is Dennis Joner.
Good evening, Mister Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to come here and this is purely for information, but as you know, about four years ago, we were first accredited as the Health Department. North Carolina passed a law that now requires all health departments in North Carolina to be accredited. And it was our time this past year to, to be reaccredited every four years, and so we just completed that last fall. And I'm pleased to say that in December, the North Carolina Local Health Department Accreditation Board out of Raleigh did meet and awarded us with reaccreditation for another four years. We're one of eighty-two county health departments now that have been awarded accreditation status. Primarily recognizes that the county health department performs at or above a standard level of quality in the core functions of assessment, assurance and policy development and in the ten essential services of public health. We're pleased to say that we met a hundred and forty-three out of a hundred and forty-eight benchmarks that, or excuse me, a hundred and forty-three out of a hundred and forty-eight activities that cover forty-one key benchmarks that they're looking at when they are looking at the different types of activities that we do. So, we're very pleased with that and I want to just take this opportunity to thank the county for the support that's been given to the Health Department and also to our staff who worked hard and particularly Patricia Hancock, our nursing director, who was our accreditation coordinator through this process. She did an excellent job in helping getting us ready for the accreditation submission that we had to submit as well as the three day site visit that occurred in September. So, we're very pleased with that and we wanted to pass this along to y'all and just make you aware that you continue to have an accredited county health department.
Well, thank you for a job well done, Dennis.
Thank you.
And getting good people to work for us and thank all your staff for us too. Anyone else?
I'd just like to say that anybody who has been through an accreditation process knows what they've gone through, because it is very, can be very grueling at times and I was fortunate or unfortunate enough to do that several times during the thirty years of education and the fact that you do this and have to do this doesn't necessarily make you better, but it does make you better, because you look at all those things you're already doing and sometimes you find out you can do it better, so a job well done, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Stanley County Water and Sewer Authority appointees, Donna Davis, Director is the presenter.
Good evening, Mister Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for your attention to this item. This is for the Stanley Water and Sewer Authority and I am requesting the reappointment of board members to this, to this Board of Directors for this authority. I just wanted to update you just a little bit, this board is, is eight years old now and in the past eight years, these members and others that have served with them have extended approximately eighty to ninety miles of water line in the Stanley County area over that eight-year period. And I think they've been very effective doing what they need to do to serve these citizens and make sure we meet the requirements of our funding agencies. Each of these three folks who are up for renewal have, or for reappointment, have indicated that they would be willing to serve another term and if there are no other recommendations from the Commissioners, I am recommending reappointment of Mister Terry Blaylock, Mister William Riggsby and Mister Don Brooks for another term to the Board of Directors of the Stanley Water and Sewer Authority.
Thank you, Donna. Anyone have anything else? It was a pleasure to board.
I make a motion we approve the appointments.
Motion made by Commissioner Shudo to approve the appointees. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Donovan, Vice Chairman Donovan, excuse me. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Thank you.
Motion carried, thank you, Donna. Next item on the agenda, agenda is planning and zoning, presentation of the resolution re consigning, designing the county lines for Cabarrus and Stanley Counties. Andy, you on board again?
I am on board. Michael had a conflict this evening and, that arose and so I'm also taking his place on this item as well, so bear with me. What you have in your packet is the resolution, this resolution is very similar, in fact, the same as the resolution that was approved by Cabarrus County a couple of months back. They, they've already taken action on this resolution. As you know, the board, this, gosh, this process started four years ago and so back into September, or excuse me, in the spring of two thousand thirteen, I want to say in the April to June timeframe, you, you previously adopted a resolution that would, that finalized the survey, or the survey process for the line. And so, this resolution, what this resolution does is it records that line and finalizes the map and line and basically puts it, puts it in place. There is still a, a process that needs to put, take place with the General Assembly to do this and to change down in the southern portion of this, down by the Rocket River, the, it'll, it will, it'll meander with the, the river a, a little bit and then actually there's a, we found a marker out in the, in the body of the river, so it'll, it'll allow that to go down there. So, there's a little bit of a change down there that requires us to get General Assembly approval and Cabarrus County's fine with that and I know Justin and Fletcher are aware of that and will be working to, to get that in place. I've included some additional information for you this evening and all these maps are down front too and they're in large. One map that I put in here for you is a large map, it's color coded, and there's an Excel spreadsheet that goes along with that and the Excel spreadsheet gives you the, the name and the taxpayer and the, the physical address and their address where they actually get billed to, because some of these folks don't live at this parcel, they live somewhere else. But I wanted to show you, highlighted all the parcels that are, that will be impacted by this. Now, obviously, these parcels are, today are in, reside in both Stanley County and Cabarrus County, but this, this county line survey will adjust those in some places. The most that this will impact is sixty feet and so at any point along the line from what we had as our tax map line going back in history to what was, has actually been surveyed based on the land records and the markers that were found by the North Carolina Geodetic Survey that we did and you all passed that resolution back in the spring of two thousand thirteen, the most that the discrepancy is, is sixty feet at any point along that line. So, we're not talking a significant amount, but what this map shows is all those properties that will be impacted in some way. What I've done is I've put some blue dots down that we marked and there are actually one, two, three, four, there's actually eight of those. Four of them run along the line and then there's four that are clustered down in the southern portion. Those are the ones that will stay in Stanley County based on the General Assembly taking action to make sure that we, that we follow that river and not the, and not, and not the line and so those will actually stay in Stanley County, those four at the, at the bottom. The other four will be moved to Cabarrus County. Now, with respect to the, the school system, if those folks have children who live, who live, they may go to Cabarrus County Schools now, but if they go to Stanley County Schools, they are grandfather and they will be allowed to continue to go to Stanley County Schools for the duration. Now, if they sell their home and someone else moves in, they'll have to go to the, to the, to the, where they go, where their, their, where they reside, which would be Cabarrus County. But the folks who live in those four homes or, and they'll reside in Cabarrus County, but they will be grandfather and allowed to finish, whether they're just started school in Stanley County or whether they're getting close to graduation, either way, they'll be allowed to finish in Stanley, if they so choose. They may elect to, to go to Cabarrus County Schools, but they certainly will have, continue to have the choice. With respects to taxation, we will be working with the Cabarrus County Tax Office over the course of the next year, so these, from a taxation perspective, this won't take place until January one of two thousand fifteen. As you know, we set the, set the tax records as of January one of each year and then we pass a budget in June and then the people get billed for what was on the ground as of January one, beginning in July. And so, that won't happen until January fifteenth, so this won't have an impact on the fifteenth, until the fifteen, sixteen budget and it's not gonna be a significant impact. There will be a lot of trading and we really don't anticipate many, many changes at all from a taxation perspective in a, because our folks have done a lot of research already on this and where our line may have moved a little bit, their line has also moved and so there's gonna be a fair amount of give and take in terms of making this work out from a tax perspective. With respect to land records and deeds, already a lot of deeds that are filed along, that are folks who live along theirs are already filed in both counties anyways, that's as a result of this resolution, that'll take effect January one of two thousand fourteen. But again, that's really a, more of a policy than it is practice, the practices that attorneys are already filing these deeds in most of these, in both counties anyways, because they're, they straddle the line and so. That's just some additional information for you this evening. Again, you already approved the survey process and the line, really all this does is records it, this resolution does is record it and finalizes it and that allows us to continue to move forward with the, the transition. But again, this will not have an impact on schools, any of those folks who are moving from Stanley County to Cabarrus County based as a result of this resurvey will be allowed to be, to be grandfathered into the school district which they were started. I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
Anyone have any questions, Andy?
I have one and it's probably because of my ignorance. I have one and it's probably because of my ignorance. The blue dot at the very top there.
Yes.
I know the, the folks there, is all, will all of their property be in Cabarrus County? Or does it, they'll split some of the?
That's a dwelling. So, these are dwellings that will move into Cabarrus County. Not all their property, but the dwelling, the blue dots represent a, a case where the dwelling will now reside in Cabarrus County. Part of their property could still remain in Stanley County, but the dwelling will move to, in those, in those instances, will move to Cabarrus County. That's what I thought. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a question, but I do want to thank Andy for getting this information for us. I know it's in addition to what we had in our packet and this was most helpful for us to be able to see this, just like Mr. McIntyre's question, it helps us be able to have a chance to look at it and see it. So, thank you for, to you and also to Michael for getting that together.
I have one question.
Just want to make one more comment. We actually, these, these folks on this spreadsheet, were actually sent a letter probably six months to a year ago as we were going through the process and the survey process. We actually held two public hearings in conjunction with Cabarrus County. One was in Mount Pleasant and one was in Locust at the Crutchfield Center. And so, all these folks have already been notified of this and we held these two public hearings to show them the new survey and what was going to take place. I think six people total between the Mount Pleasant one and the Locust one actually showed up, but all these folks have already been notified. So, they're aware that this resurvey was taking place.
I'm familiar with this area like Jane is and another area, Commissioner McIntyre. On that first dot north of the border of the river where it says Mission Church Road and Chilcote across this county line.
Yes, sir.
That's a subdivision in the, on Highway two hundred and just a few houses in that subdivision were actually in Stanley County as opposed to, we thought they were in Cabarrus County. Someone surveyed it said they're in Stanley County. I was curious, is that dot that's located right there, is that for just one parcel of land or is that for the houses in that subdivision?
That's just a, that's just one dwelling. If, if there were multiple dwellings, it would be multiple dots like you have down in the south, I guess southwestern corner where there's actually four dots. But in this case, it's one additional home, one dwelling will move from Stanley to Cabarrus. And so, but again, there may be some land that's picked up and moved into Stanley County from Cabarrus County, so it's hard to say again what ultimately will be the end result. But that, in that case, Josh, is just the one dwelling and that is the, that is the subdivision on two hundred. That's exactly where that is.
Anyone else? It's a pleasure to board. We've got the resolution in front of us.
I make a motion we approve the resolution.
Motion made by Commissioner McIntyre for approval of the resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
Secuted by Commissioner Oshito. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Motion carried. Next item is the Locust-Red Cross Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Vice Chairman Donovan is the presenter.
And I would invite you to look at your packet materials. I just want to run through a couple of things. As we mentioned last meeting, this DOT sponsored meeting was going to be held in Locust at the Crutchfield Campus. This was last Tuesday on January the fourteenth and Josh Morton, Commissioner Morton and I did attend. And the purpose of the meeting was to gain input from the jurisdictions, especially those that are directly affected, which is Red Cross, Locust, and Stanley County. There were representatives of Stanfield present and they did speak and there were people there from Oakboro, but they did not comment on any type of newer, new realignment. The first couple of maps that you have indicate the type of volumes and, and traffic that they expect along Highway twenty-four, twenty-seven in the western Stanley area. If you'll note, on the right-hand side, it says that the two thousand twelve volume is about ten thousand vehicles per day in the Red Cross area. That's the box over on the most right-hand side and that there's a capacity of forty thousand per day. But then when you move to the green area on the map, which is in the section west of Locust, excuse me, west, west of two hundred in Locust, you'll see that the, the current volume is twenty-one thousand vehicles a day and the vi, the capacity is twenty-four. So, they're already reaching a difficult time of being able to, to carry the, the load that's already there. The second map has to, has the same kind of information except this is the volumes they anticipate in two thousand and thirty-five. Again, if you start on the right-hand side, you'll see that closer to the Red Cross area along twenty-four, twenty-seven, they're anticipating fifteen thousand four hundred vehicles a day where they have capacity of forty. But then when you switch to the downtown Locust area, you see that this now is indicated that they're overcapacity shown by a red line where they are having, especially that area west of two Highway two hundred, thirty thousand three hundred vehicles a day where the capacity is twenty-four thousand three hundred. Ruben Crumey with DOT was also there and if you look at the, the next page in your packet, you'll see that the, he described what an expressway facility should look like and that is what the type of facility that DOT is, is expecting twenty-four, twenty-seven to, to be like. High mobility, low access, forty-five to sixty miles per hour. There are a median between the, the lanes. There are interchanges only at major cross streets or at grade, at grade intersections and that driveways would be limited in location and number. And as we find with the super street already along that way, there'd only be right in and right out and that traffic signals would not be allowed. After the, after this information that I've just explained to you was presented, Locust spoke up and said that they would like to keep the current alignment. And, and let me back up because you've got another page of, of facts there. Let me just mention to you and you can kind of look at those. If you look at the top, it says Northern Alternate One, Northern Alternate One A, One B, Southern Alternate and then NC twenty-four, twenty-seven. This page is kind of busy, but it shows you a lot of the details having to do with stream crossings, whether there will be any wetlands affected, if they're present use value properties and if so, how they'd be affected, railroad crossings, things of that, business relocations, things of that nature. So, again, I was just getting ready to say, there was a lot of, lot of information provided. And then the representatives of Locust spoke up and said that they are hoping that they can keep the current alignment of twenty-four, twenty-seven that will run through Locust. Red Cross mentioned that they would like to see the Northern Alternate One, I don't think they had a preference, One A or One B. The One A and One B, by the way, if you're looking at the, either the schematic map or the aerial map, One A and One B are those two different choices that kind of go around either side of the golf course there on the, the west side of Locust. And it's a little bit hard to read, but I think One A is the outside one, the one that's most in Cabarrus County and One B is the one that stays in Stanley County part of the way and then turns and goes into Cabarrus County. So, you had two entities that were suggesting and proposing either the twenty-four, twenty-seven alignment or the Northern Alternate as their primary or but most important choice. When they asked us, Josh and I, we said that we had looked at these alignments, I think it was back on October the twenty-first, that we had not chosen one, but at that point in time, we had said that we would like to hear from the towns and find out what types of things, issues that they were dealing with. If you recall too, we had about three or four choices along the southern route at that point in time and that, and that we had not made a decision one way or the other, even though our minutes do indicate that we prefer a southern route. And I think that the southern route is preferred mainly because we have a lot of infrastructure along the southern side of Highway twenty-four, twenty-seven. We know that it'll be easier to serve the wastewater, especially facility, there'll, there'll be in Oakboro and it serves that area. We said that we didn't want to impact or put pressure on farmlands and while there are some agricultural properties to the southern side, there's probably more on the northern side. And there were a couple of other things having to do with the principles that we thought that, that we wanted to, to follow. Estimated cost, I think, was one of them as well. Didn't want, we didn't want to disrupt existing commerce. So, the way we left the meeting, and that's a long story, excuse me for it, but the way we left the meeting was that DOT wanted to, wanted to have a couple of alternates that they could take to a public hearing. And so, really, the only ones that were spoken up for are, is the Northern Alternate or keeping the current alignment that runs through Red Cross and, and through, through Locust. As I said, Locust wanted the current alignment, Red Cross wanted the Northern and the person that spoke up for Stanfield said that they really didn't want the, they would actually prefer the Southern Alternate of the three. So, I got an email today from Dennis Dujinkie with the Rocket River RPO. They're going to hold another stakeholders' meeting on February the seventeenth and I wanted to make sure that you had this information and that we either have some discussion or you tell me how you would like for the Stanley County to be represented and whether we do still maintain that a Southern Alternate isn't, is something that needs to be on the books and needs to be looked at when they get to a public hearing. Commissioner Morton, you were there. Is there anything that, that I have left out or, or that you'd like to add?
You've covered everything pretty well, Mr. Commissioner Donovan. I just had, I never realized on traveling twenty-four, twenty-seven, and I probably travel that as much as anybody on this board because I work in Locust, and I was amazed when we learned that the cutoff, once you travel down the road, when you get to Liberty Hill Church at Frog Pond, just beyond that is where those cutoffs will be, either for the north route or the southern route. That means the rest of that highway all the way into Locust will be a second, some, maybe a secondary road or something else. But like, after you pass Liberty Hill Church, Robert, if you look at that last drawing right, I've got it for me right here, it's right between Liberty Hill Church Road and Lakes, Lake Wood Road. And that cutoff would encompass a lot of properties and also if it's, if they follow the definition of the expressway facility, it's going to affect a lot of open land in that section. That's going to affect a lot of property owners down the line. I was amazed that, that it seemed to be the consensus of that meeting that they would consider the north route or the Locust route, but they would not consider the southern route as far as the municipal policies were concerned. But when you look at the whole situation, it seems like to me that the southern route, in my opinion, I think Mr. Donovan, Commissioner Donovan expressed this too, I think it should be considered at that particular meeting. I don't think we should disqualify any of these routes because we're looking at a project that's not going to take place until, not two thousand thirty-five. It's twenty-one years from now. I mean, we're, we're jumping the gun, it seems like to me, just to get things in line, a lot can change in a county in twenty years. And so, I feel like the DOT along with the county and the municipalities should take more time to consider this, these proposals and look at it in a more in-depth detail than is what we're looking for at the present time right now because those things can change a great deal. So, I recommend that, you know, with, on the meeting in this, in February, that we express some of these ideas to the Department of Transportation.
One of the things Mr. Morton and I did discuss too is if you'll look, even in two thousand and thirty-five, the, the, the volume on the road there near Red Cross is still only about a third of what the capacity is. And so, one of the things that's mentioned and what we mentioned and what was mentioned the other night is there is a, you know, a cost-benefit relationship, but if we look at our schematic drawing, if we actually, if coming east, if you went around Stanfield on the, the southern side and then headed directly back up north and, and picked up twenty-four, twenty-seven, there would not be, we would not be over, overcapacity at that point in time. And we can, we, you could actually save the, the money that would be invested in a southern route that goes all the way down toward Oakboro, should, should we choose to do that. If we, if we don't choose to do that though, there is the fact that that does serve another community in our county. And because that means that that alternate goes between Red Cross and Oakboro and that way, again, we're talking about moving goods and, goods and services as well as people, that enables folks to get to Oakboro a lot easier than any of the other routes that we have.
Also, I guess I'm prejudiced of Stanley County, but the, the alternates, One and, One A and One B, they conclude and terminate in Cabarrus County. I don't really care for that, but I can understand by looking at the type of structures on the north side and the north route and the golf course out there and the shopping center at Walmart and all that section, they would have to bypass them without, because that Rocket River's not the line what we're talking about. But on the south side, there's more areas, open areas to bring that, that bypass or that back into Stanley County, into the Locust area on the Stanley County side. That's another thought, which is should be considered.
As I talked to a few Alborn officials and they were surprised about the going through Locust thing. They'd prefer to go around just to move traffic to Charlotte and move goods to that without having to, you know, get, go through a congested area.
Well, I think we're looking at a, a southern route that it's maybe a little hard to get your hands on because like Commissioner Morton said, it's so far out that we can't, right now at the present, we wouldn't really need that road that far south, but if we don't go that far south now, we'll be right in a town if we don't. So, it looks like we're just going too far south, but if you go look twenty-five, thirty years out, we really don't know. We need to plan as far as we can down where we don't have many houses to affect.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also just like to mention that we've just gone through a, a planning process with Connect, you know, operated through the Central Line Council of Government and they haven't yet determined what scenario that they're going to put forward, but one of those scenarios was called centers and corridors. And the most important thing for us in Stanley County is to make sure that we can move people and goods and services in and out of our county. And I don't think we want to do anything that, that does kind of clog us up on one side. And while the, these particular scenarios haven't yet been made public, I think as the, as the COG committees and as, as they work through things, we don't want to be sending them the wrong message that we want twenty-four, twenty-seven to come from Charlotte to Midland and stop and have development there rather than having that development come on into Stanley County and being able to help there. So, my request to the, the board tonight is that whatever way you choose, please indicate to, to us who are going to be at that meeting, how you would like to proceed and make sure that if, if, if your interest is in a Southern Alternate, that we don't leave that out of any kind of public process moving forward.
I don't think we should leave that southern one out, just like Mr. Morton said, that, Commissioner Morton said that we've got a lot of utilities already in and infrastructure and when you're going north of town, it's going to be a pretty good stretch to put all that kind of infrastructure in. The southern route to me, I know it may be a longer road, but I, I think it'll be the best for the county.
What would be the impact of the expressway if they, if, like Locust wants it to go through town? Would that have to change or would it still slow traffic? No, I wouldn't. I don't know why they didn't do it in the first place, but that's beside the point.
My understanding is that they're looking at trying to create a two-hundred-foot wide right-of-way through there and I don't think that two-hundred feet currently exist. And I know, Josh, you and I were talking about where that Bank of Stanley building is, that's probably going to have to go. Now, they did mention that they would try to meander it through there, but like I said, and as you have on these sheets here, no stoplights, right turn in, right turn out, only forty-five to sixty miles per hour. You know, I don't think that it really serves the town and commerce in the town very well. And that was the comment that Red Cross made too. They said, how can you have a town with, with the highway running right through the middle of it? And that's why they didn't want it coming through the middle of their facility. But again, because of the capacity, I don't think that we're actually dealing with that. But I think you, you've asked a great question and I can't see how it would really benefit either Locust or those people who are moving through.
And my question was, would they have to build service roads to go parallel to the highway if they were to?
the highway if they were to run the highway straight through Locust like you have? And if so, you'd have to move a lot of buildings, so I, I just don't know about the... They dare to ask for me, they'd just knock 'em down.
Well, then the, uh, if you look on that project study alternative, uh, on the business relocations under the NC twenty-four, twenty-seven, uh, project, it'd have eighteen business relocations, and that's in the, that's in the city of Locust area. So that's a situation, right now, the existing right-of-way in the city limits of Locust is a hundred fifty feet. So, they would need an additional fifty feet to make a two-hundred-foot right-of-way. But that extra twenty-five feet on either side is going to impact some of those buildings.
Do you wanna pass a motion or whether you just want to individually, uh, you know, communicate with us?
I would say, as far as I'm concerned, for other than having a motion or anything, I'd just give you consensus, I'd like to stay with the Southern Route right now, and that one downtown Locust is, just doesn't make sense to me. I mean, I don't care what we do, you're gonna still, it's gonna be a mess and, and you're gonna be, look like Independence Boulevard over, you're gonna be flying through Charlotte at sixty mile an hour and can't get off of it. And, uh, I mean, really, that's what they're gonna be doing.
Once you get on you're there.
Yeah, you have to go away to the other side of Locust around and come back. And, uh, but I'd say, I, my preference is the Southern Route, that's just my, my saying, so I'll go around the board.
My, that's my, that's my preference.
That, that's likewise with me, even though you gotta keep all, keep them, keep them all on the table at this point, you know? Even going through the center unless they come up with some awesome plan to make that work, but that, that's like my third, you know, I just don't see how that works.
If you wait thirty years to do this, what's downtown Locust gonna look like? You know, what would we have to move then? Uh, well, when they did Independence, the original time and build all those buildings, that was the most expensive four-lane road ever built in Oklahoma. It was a hundred million dollars a mile.
I, I thank you very much for your input, and, um, I am, I'm planning to attend that meeting on the seventeenth and will carry your information forward.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Donovan. Next item on the agenda is the presentation of the budget amendment number two thousand fourteen dash seventeen and two fourteen dash eighteen for appropriation of funds to cover costs to assess the Oakboro Waters, wastewater treatment plant and bond council services.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You may recall seeing this budget amendment previously, and you did, you saw it in twenty, the fiscal year twelve thirteen. We did that to set up, uh, what was roughly seventy-eight thousand dollars that you set aside, uh, we took some money from the utilities retained earnings and from the general fund balance. And that was for Stephen to do an analysis of that wastewater treatment plant, to do some due diligence around, um, the plant and the water line, uh, so we would have some more information for, uh, the negotiation and the acquisition process. Because that happened in twelve thirteen, Stephen didn't bill us, and so the funds were never spent. And so we never spent the money in last year's budget, so we need, well, but we will be spending money in this year's budget, and so we need to do that budget amendment again. I'm asking that we increase it by two thousand dollars, and that will allow us to cover not only Stephen's part of it, cause that's gonna be less than what we anticipated back last year, but we also, there's another piece of that that we, that we didn't anticipate last fiscal year, um, which was the bond council that we're gonna need for the USDA, uh, revenue bond that we're gonna assume, uh, from Oakboro, uh, and the LGC process and all the closing documents that'll need to be done. And so, we're asking that we, um, that you all, um, approve these budget amendments in the tune of eighty thousand dollars. Again, that's a two thousand dollar increase from what you previously did, um, so it's pretty much in line, but I, we needed to put that amendment back in place so we have the funds to expend for this fiscal year. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions with Andy? What a pleasure to the board.
I make a motion, will you approve?
Motion made by Commissioner Ashudo for approv- approval, do I hear a second? Seconded by Commissioner McIntyre. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the Oakboro Sewer... No, excuse me, I've done, done that one. No, we've got to do that. Oakboro Sewer Treatment Plant Acquisition Resolution in Draft, Debt Assumption Agreement. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, this is the, one of the first items we need to, to have in place to gain LGC approval for the acquisition of the wastewater treatment plant and the Saint Martin Road Water Line, uh, in Oakboro. Um, you have the resolution before you, this was prepared by our bond council. We also included a draft, uh, assignment assumption agreement. There are some blanks in that, and that's purposeful, because it's not completely, and so, as part of the resolution, you're giving the chairman and the, the, uh, the county manager and the attorney some flexibility to work out the, the, um, any, um, moving parts, uh, for that assumption and, uh, assignment and assumption agreement, so we can get that squared away. And so, tho- that is what's before you. Again, this is required by the local government commission, uh, and the USDA, uh, to approve this resolution for us to move forward. Um, and it appears that we will be on the LGC's March agenda, they meet the first Tuesday of the month, and so we're hoping to close on this arrangement in, sometime in, uh, the middle of March and take possession of that plant.
Anyone have any questions with manager? What a pleasure to the board.
Chairman, I make a motion that we, uh, approve the Oakboro Sewer Treatment Plant Acquisition Resolution in Draft Debt Assumption Agreement as presented.
Motion made by Commissioner McIntyre for approval, do I hear a second? Seconded by Vice Chairman McIntyre, uh, yeah, no, excuse me, Vice Chairman Donovan. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Motion carried. Next item is the architect contract for Tar Heel Challenge Academy Project. Present, presenter is Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm, also wanna recognize the General Clontz, who's in the audience this evening, um, who's, uh, been an instrumental part of the, this Tar Heel Challenge Academy, and so if I miss anything, he's certainly also available to, uh, answer any questions this evening as well. Uh, as you know, the, the state, um, per, um, granted the funds for the Tar Heel Challenge Academy for, then, from the National Guard to get started here in Stanley County. Uh, this will be the second one in the state of North Carolina. Those funds came, we're the fiduciary agent for those funds, and so we have to go through the process of, um, securing all the services that are gonna be needed to carry out the, the renovation of that project so they can get started. Um, back in, uh, in, in November, um, December timeframe, we issued an RFQ, a Request for Qualifications for Architectural Services for this project, um, about a three-million-dollar renovation project at the New London School. Um, those, uh, RFQs were due, uh, December twentieth. We took, we received about, uh, I believe, um, ten or twelve, um, requests or, um, qualifications, uh, responses from different architect firms from, uh, all over the state of North Carolina. Uh, we went through a period of due diligence, the Guard had some of their folks, their in-house, uh, engineers and architects, review those, uh, requests for qualifications, uh, staff review, reviewed those requests for qualifications, and we narrowed that down to a short list of four firms. Um, we interviewed those four firms individually, um, last Friday, and after that period of due diligence, uh, it is recommended that the, um, the board, um, approve, uh, the, authorize staff to enter into a contract with MBAJ Architecture, Boomerang Design, for the Planning, Design and Construction Management Services associated with Tar Heel Challenge Academy. Just as background, uh, MBAJ slash Boomerang recently designed the renovations and expansions at Loc- Locust and Aquadale. Our folks in the inspections Department said they experienced no issues with, uh, th- those architects, uh, and that process. The arch- this architecture firm will also be contracting, uh, the services of our local civil engineering firm, uh, to assist as a consultant on the civil part of this project, so, um, that's a good thing for the community. Um, the National Guard was also very, uh, intrigued by the, um, the master planning, um, proposal that this group provided. And so, at the end of the day, uh, any of those four firms that we interviewed, uh, and probably some of those that we didn't interview certainly could do this work, but I think it comes down to a relationship and feeling most comfortable. Uh, and some of the folks at the Guard had worked with some of the other consultants that MBAJ will bring on for the mechanical and structural on this project, and so, uh, that was where they felt most comfortable, and so, uh, given it's gonna be, uh, their facility, uh, and, and their program, um, we, we all came to a consensus that, uh, MBAJ be, be recommended to this board. And so, um, with that, I'm asking for the authorization to enter into that, uh, into that contract, um, for their services. Those contracts typically work on a percentage of the project, uh, and so we will, uh, wo- work to, um, to have them sharpen their pencil and, uh, bring us in, uh, and so we can get it done, um, on budget. Be more happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions with Andy? General Clontz, I wanna say, I wanna appreciate your hard work and years of hard work that I know that you've done trying to get this project here, uh, and not only this project, a lot of other projects that've been in our county, and it's been a pleasure to meet you and be able to work with you over the past years, and I really enjoyed it, and thank you for your hard work. What a pleasure to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the contract, uh, for the MBAJ Architecture for this project.
Motion made for approval by Commissioner McIntyre, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Morton. Any other discussion?
I'd just like to say, uh, also that I appreciate General Clontz's, uh, hard work on this, and also like to thank, uh, Representative Justin Burr for, uh, finding a way to come up with the money. Uh, although it was there, just had to get the pieces together, and he worked hard in conjunction with you, I'm sure, to do that, and I'd just like to, uh, to make that comment. Thank you.
Just wanna, one other item for any folks who may be watching out there and may be interested, it is anticipated after they go through this process of designing and, and getting it ready, that we'll be, begin the construction of this, uh, facility, the renovation and the construction of some, uh, possibly some new buildings out there to accommodate the barracks, um, by, uh, the fall of two thousand fourteen. And so that, just so the folks know, that's the kinda timeframe that we're working under that will be breaking ground and, um, getting s- things started in the fall of twenty fourteen on this project.
What a pleasure to the board.
I think we have a motion and a second.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank God for keeping me straight. I'm, I'm getting older all day, every day, so... Next item on the agenda is the branding, branding initiative recommendation by county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Unfortunately, none of these things land in any one department, so, I'm having, I've been, uh, I know I'm presenting these, but that's because they don't, they don't, uh, they don't belong to anyone else, so unfortunately, they've been part of my plate, but, um, and unfortunately, uh, certainly kept us busy in moving this county forward. But the next item is the branding initiative. As you, you recall, we, um, talked, um, the city of Albemarle actually approached us, um, back, uh, gosh, it's probably been close to a year ago, uh, maybe not quite that long ago, about the fact that they were gonna do some branding, and there was some discussion from members of this board that that's something we oughta look at. Um, and if we're gonna do it, why not work in conjunction to hire the same firm, so we don't have two firms doing this kinda work in the county and, uh, kinda butting heads on, uh, in terms of some of those recommendations? So, we issued a joint RFP, uh, with the, uh, city, and we also invited any of the municipality, other municipalities who may wanna do a branding, uh, initiative at a, a COG meeting, uh, and there was some varied interest, but at the end of the day, they didn't feel like they were in a position to move forward at that time, and were encouraged by the fact that the county would be looking at a countywide brand versus the city looking at their brand. Um, but we did a, a joint RFP, and based on those responses, um, we recommend, uh, and the city's gonna make a similar recommenda- recommendation tomorrow evening at their meeting, uh, to consult and use Norstar. Uh, and it really came down to the depth of their, uh, their research plan and sophistication of that, their creativity. Um, you know, they haven't done a, a tremendous amount of work in, in North Carolina, but they've done some, and so sometimes that's good, because we don't get a, a canned, uh, you know, logo or something that's kinda just been recreated that, you know, ten other counties and, uh, or communities in North Carolina have. And so, they will go, um, they really presented a nice, uh, um, a, a plan for developing that research, um, creative logo, the narratives that'll go with that, and all the collateral. What collateral means is just all your, um, the media and other brochures that will go along with that brand. And so, um, the total cost will be forty-one thousand dollars to the county. Um, we will, we're, we're splitting that cost fifty-fifty, so the city, or, so the city's gonna pay forty-one thousand, we'll pay forty-one thousand. We can divide that over two fiscal years, since we will be starting in February, and it's about a seven-month process, so we're looking at about twenty-nine thousand three hundred this year and eleven thousand in next year's budget. We have sufficient funds in the Strategy Fund in EDC to pay for this, as well as some, uh, other funds in the professional line on them that they haven't spent, um, that were trending below target on, and so, we, we certainly have sufficient funds to, to enter into this co- uh, contract. Um, you've got some other information about the, you know, the firms that bid in terms of where they came from and where sort of the range of, um, of bids came in, and we shared that with you, as well as the project timeframe. And it, Norstar can, does pretty well compared to the, sort of the mid-range, as well as they do pretty well in terms of scope. Um, you know, they're not trying to come in here and, you know, put something together in a couple of weeks and throw that out to us, I mean, they're gonna take their time. Um, their research period was actually longer than any other, the other firms, and so we really think they're gonna do a, a good period of due diligence, um, to help us build that brand, uh, behind that research. So, that's the recommendation, uh, of staff, is to, uh, contract with, uh, Norstar for that, um, for that, um, for that branding. And I would recommend that the motion include a contingency in there, that if the city doesn't take similar action, then we wouldn't do it, um, cause I think we really truly wanna, you know, utilize the same firm to leverage that purchasing power. And so you may wanna say, well, you know, move forward contingent on the city's approval of, of utilizing, uh, Norstar as well. So, um, that's the recommendation, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions with the manager? What a pleasure to the board.
I make a motion, we approve the branding with the, um, work on this with Norstar with the Almaral City Council, contingent on them passing the resolution also.
Motion made by Commissioner Ashudo to approve, do I hear a second? Seconded by Vice Chairman Donovan. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Motion carried. Next item is our two thousand fourteen, fifteen budget calendar.
All right, just making my notes, um, this actually probably could've been on the consent, but, uh, wanted just to make sure you all had an opportunity to weigh in on our budget calendar. We've already actually started that process by compiling some revenue and expense projections, uh, for next year that we'll put together for your retreat in, in February. Um, we did include some, uh, a, a block of time in April to meet with the Stanley Community College trustees, uh, and the Board of Education if the Board so chooses, and so, um, we didn't specify any specific dates, but we put that in there, because I think there may be value, and we haven't done that in a couple of years, maybe value in sitting down and just talking goals and priorities, uh, wi- with those, um, those two entities. So, um, we also, we put down some dates for the workshops in mid-June, but certainly those are flex- flexible and subject change, and we can, we can, we, you can narrow those in and, uh, um, and get some specific dates as we get closer to the manager's recommended budget in, in May. But, uh, for now, this sorta lays out the timeframe, so you have some idea, um, some of the key, uh, um, dates as we go along, uh, through June thirtieth of two thousand fourteen. Be happy to any, answer any question.
Anyone have any questions? What a pleasure to the board. Motion made by Vice Chairman Donovan for approval, seconded by Commissioner Ashudo. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Motion carried. The next item is our consent agenda, and I will entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
So move.
Motion made by Commissioner McIntyre for approval, seconded by Commissioner Ashudo. All in, all in favor say aye. Motion carried. Well, I'm gonna still ask for public comment in case someone come in wants to speak to us, but I don't think anyone's come in, but... Commissioner McIntyre.
No comment.
Commissioner Morton.
No comment.
Commissioner Donovan, Vice Chairman Donovan.
Just had, wanted to say two things. One is, in, within our packets tonight, we have some information that, uh, COG has sent out their two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen annual report. Uh, I think it's a, it's a, it's a good, uh, overview of, of what COG does and how they do it. One of the things that struck me was that, uh, on the back, they've got a pie chart that talks about their sources of revenues. Members dues in a, um, a twenty-one-point-eight million dollar, uh, expenditure are only three-point-four-three percent, which, uh, I think is money well spent on our behalf. And I know that, uh, uh, there have been some criticisms of this organization over the past number of years, but, uh, I'm very proud that we're still a part of that, and I think that we get, we get our money's worth. The second thing I just wanted to mention very quickly is that, um, the school board has invited us to take tours, uh, last week, uh, two of us went, Peter... tours. Last week, two of us went. Peter Ashudo and I went on a school tour that included stops at Albemarle High School, Norwood, South Stanley, Locust, West Stanley Middle School, and Richfield. And I, I came away with the idea, or with having affirmed, that education is probably the most important thing that we can do for economic development. And that I hope that this board will continue to do what we can to support the education so that we can continue to build our workforce, and that we can look to attract and, and bring new and more jobs in here. But I'm, I'm very impressed with the, with the staff. Just, I know that we all feel like that the county has a great staff, and I think that that's also true of, of the schools. They, they have as good a staff as anybody in the region. Maybe where they lack might be on facilities or with the ability to work with certain things. And that's something I hope we'll take a look at. Thank you.
Commissioner Ashudo?
Just got about four things here. Just real quick, I want to echo what, what Commissioner Donovan said, and that was a pretty, very good tour. I mean, the one thing you're looking at in the future, I know it's the school board who does this, but, man, they're gonna have to spend money on upgrading buildings or consolidate them. I, I think I had these stats a year ago, and there was, I think there was one school a year ago that was under sixty percent capacity. Now we have four schools, Indy, Oakboro, Stanfield, and Albemarle High School are all under sixty percent capacity. And, yeah, and there's a lot of, we saw a lot of space, and you could expand to fill your space. We saw a lot of space being filled at South Stanley, because they had the room. And then we were at West Stanley Middle School, where teachers have to share the same classrooms. So that's something the school board's gonna have to work with. One interesting thing is all the, all the elementary schools in the seventies that were built with this open classroom concept, when they didn't build walls. Now that's been haunting the taxpayers for years trying to fix that up. That was a very good tour, and I encourage the other commissioners to take advantage of that if they can. And also, that was the, kind of last year, I did my, my first year of going around with all the taxpayer, you know, and just seeing how the taxpayer dollars are being used. And I put together a presentation and video, and I'm making presentations to different video, to different groups on how our tax dollars are being used, just to explain to them. I've talked to the West Stanley Rotary Club. I'm scheduled to talk to the Albemarle Rotary Club. I'm gonna talk to the Employment Security Commission tomorrow, and give the presentation there. So, you know, I'd like people to know how the dollars are being used. Secondly, real quick, this summer, we started the, I know I talk about this from time to time, I just want to get the word out. After that winter, that's the summer storm, we microburst, we came up with the Stanley County Emergency Management Page. And they put out a blast today about the snow, the snow line, that I thought was pretty good. And that, I think we got nine hundred nineteen residents now like that page. That should be, really be in the thousands. So I tell you what, I don't watch the news during the day, and a lot of times, that's where, you know, you, you get the first information of the, the bad weather. So that's a good thing that the county put together to get communications out at no charge and no cost to the taxpayers. Saturday, myself and Sheriff Rick Burrus, we're the two county representatives at the Martin Luther King Breakfast. I mean, if y'all ever get a chance, that's a very good event to go to. Mr. Charles wrote a very good write-up today in the paper about the speaker. She's had some good words. One thing in there that she talked about was, which I liked, was, well, of course, she talked about unity in the community. And she also talked about shop local. And she spent a lot of time shopping to rock and shop local, shopping your local city, shopping your local county. She got that message out. And one thing, just about Martin Luther King, it's really amazing. You know, he was only thirty-nine years old when he was assassinated. And the man did a lot, I mean, like him or not, but he put together peaceful rallies. And, you know, I can't imagine being back there, you know, and the protests they went to peacefully, and, and just, just how they were treated. So, and we've come a long way in this country, and we got probably a long way to go too. And finally, I know they have this get out to vote thing. I'm starting a get out to run for office campaign. Another thing I'm doing is I'm trying to spread the word that election time's coming up February the tenth, and trying to inform people what offices are open, so people can encourage the citizens to get out and run for office, to give people a choice. And I think filing period starts February tenth, and this is really the first year that we have the Representative Burrus' vision of how local elections should be. And that started back with Senate Bill four eleven, and the first change in the locals when, it used to be if you were running for school board, you couldn't run for two offices at one time. And he changed the date for filing for the school board, so now you could run for these offices in the spring. And if you don't cast, get past the primary, you can run for the school board also. That's one of the changes from Senate Bill four eleven. And of course, here's the map. We have five districts now, and both, going forward in the future, the school board and the county commissioners will have seven, seven people on each board. And they're both gonna be on five, two voting cycles. So this year, we'll have five county commissioners up for grab seats, and then two school board positions up for grab. For the school boards, and that'll be in the summertime, if you live in District One, that's gonna be out in the West Stanley end, that seat will be up for the school board, and one at-large seat. Flipping around in the county commission race, with the exception of Albemarle, all those other four districts are up for, you know, are open, plus one at-large seat. And then just want to go over the filing fees and other positions open, to let people know what's going on. The sheriff's position, that's open, and it's a sixty-two hun, six hundred and twenty-one dollar and fifty-seven cents filing fee to run for sheriff. The salary for the sheriff is sixty-two thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Clerk of courts, if you want to run for clerk for courts, that's open. The filing fee is eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety cents, with a salary of eighty-three thousand three hundred and ninety dollars. The county commissioners, it costs a hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty cents to run for, to file for county commission, and for a fifteen thousand four hundred and thirty dollar salary. North Carolina House District sixty-seven, a two hundred and seven dollar filing fee with a salary of twenty thousand seven hundred dollars. NC Senate District's twenty-five seat, two hundred and seven dollars with a salary of twenty thousand seven hundred dollars for the North Carolina senate seat. School board, man, if you got twenty-seven bucks, that's a tank of gas you could follow to be on the school board. I tell you what, they get paid two thousand seven hundred dollars to be on the school board. And I tell you, I've always said, that's one of the most thankless positions to have, with all the parents calling you all the time and the work they do on the school board. But that's coming up this year. You want to be district attorney, filing fee of a hundred, one thousand two hundred and seven dollars, with a salary of a hundred and twenty thousand seven hundred dollars. And then for judge, the district judge, which now we're in, you know, due to the changes, Stanley County is a standalone district. So if you want to be a judge in Stanley County, and, yeah, I think there's other qualifications you have to have to be judge, of course. You could flop down one thousand one hundred and seven dollars, and if you win, you get a salary of a hundred and ten thousand seven hundred dollars. So I encourage people to think about if they want, like to run for office, and it's, it's good to have a lot of choices and selections to vote for. I think that's all I got today.
Thank you. I did, I'm, I'll talk about this in, in our retreat, but I traveled yesterday all day, all up in the Burlington area, looking at co-ops for a possible way to run local food stuff here for farms. But I'll talk about that in detail as much as I can at the retreat. We'll have time to do that. I'd just like to discuss it with y'all, what I saw and what I found. Mr. Attorney?
No comment, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
I think I used up all my comments, sir.
Don't forget, next regular meetings, February the third at seven PM. I will entertain a motion for adjournance.
So move.
Motion made by Commissioner McIntyre for adjournment. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Morton. All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned. See you February the third, if not before.